Okay, it is seven o'clock on Tuesday, August thirteenth. I will call the meeting of the Village Report Edwards Board in session. And I will ask Kim to do the roll call. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Trustee Redkey.
Yeah.
Trustee Moore.
Here.
Trustee Zerflue.
President.
Trustee Hess. Trustee Grundin is on her way from voting. She'll be here momentarily.
And trustee Sailor is absent.
Okay, and we have a pledge of allegiance. And after we say the pledge of allegiance, we will stand for a moment of silence for all those who gave the ultimate sacrifice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. We are to number four, motion to approve the consent agenda, meeting minutes of July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Board meeting, monthly bills and previous month journal entries. Moved by Zerflue, second by Moore. Any discussion, anything want to be taken out of any of those items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one. Yes, okay. Public comment section, I forgot to get that sheet while I was up. Does anybody want to speak on public comment? So. This is, nobody wants to speak, but we have to turn, she had to turn this. And is this from? Who signed it?
Joe Moore.
Okay. All right. Then. We will move to president's report. First, I am going to ask. Former Public Safety Chair Caleb McGregor to say his public comments for the fire department plaque that he ordered. And we now kind of have everybody in the same place to, to be able to do that. So former trustee McGregor, if you would.
Do you have a time limit since what he does for a living?
This, this will turn into about three days of work.
Yeah.
It was while I had a, a rendering of the mural. Now staring at it when I realized that we would have reached a hundred years of the fire department last year. And the talk of a recognition did begin last year. And the fact that we're doing it now, in, in, in my world of the church, it's actually pretty quick. That we talked about something and, you know, eight months later, get it accomplished for one reason or another. But before I, I present the plaque, I did a little bit of research on the history of the fire department. And it's, it's, oh. Maybe it's not the history that we knew, but thanks to Marshall Bueller, we have, I used his, his words from his book on the history of the town. And I just thought it'd be appropriate to know what it was like in nineteen twenty-three. Following a disastrous fire in the log yard at the local mill in nineteen twenty-two. Organization for a local fire department commenced jointly sponsored, the new fire department was named the NEPCO Port Edwards Volunteer Fire Department. Their first fire truck was a donated nineteen sixteen Rio Speedwagon housed in a garage behind the mill office building. The mill whistle doubled as a fire alarm to summon firefighters in time of need. In nineteen fifty-five, the department severed ties with NEPCO. The department's trucks found a new home in the form of a garage on Wisconsin River Drive. And in nineteen eighty-seven, a more spacious garage was built in conjunction with the city garage on the Tinder Avenue. Port Edwards continues to maintain contracts to serve portions of township of Port Edwards, Cranmore and Seneca. Of the first fire chief in the village was Edward Lisa, followed by Richard Grody, Rudolph Both. And James Anderson, Thomas Bartlett, James Lizer, Patrick Arntz, Jason Warden, and now Dustin Lees. For one hundred years, the Port Edwards Fire Department has provided excellent fire protection, dedicated rescue missions, outstanding community engagement. And starting in the nineteen nineties, and you're going to give me the exact date, exceptional emergent, uh, medical, emergency medical service. So, oh. Who? Yes. Oh. See, recognizing one hundred years of exceptional service and heroism, Port Edwards Fire Department nineteen twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-three plus. It's not a death date, we have to put a plus on there. Thank you for your courage and dedication in saving lives and holding back the flames from a grateful community and village board. So, what?
Thank you, thank you for coming in for this. My last minute. Thank you for that, Caleb. All right, next we'll move into the swearing in of firefighters. Michael Kaler, John Jansen, and Jessica Lees couldn't be here again, correct? Yeah. Okay, all right, we will, Chief Lees or Mr. Stewart, do you want to say anything before that part commences?
Just say briefly, wanted to recognize and introduce you to John and Jansen and Rick Cole. They're both experienced, as I might have mentioned in the last meeting, they have the training and experience necessary to come on as full-fledged firefighters as opposed to the associate status. And they, and they both have extensive paramedic training as well. And we're very, we think we're very lucky to have them. And I think Chief Lees, we want to see a couple more words and the guys will go up and get sworn in.
Yeah, so these two I can't be thankful, can't express how thankful I am to have them on our department, make our department better. The years of experience that they bring, those two, Ann and Jessica. This means that three of them probably go to maybe fifty or sixty years worth of firing and us service. All right, that'll just help our village. But thank them again for their time and what they are willing to do for our village, our community.
All right, well, we're gonna bring you guys up and make it official. So which ones, Jonathan? All right, I state your name.
I, John Jansen.
I, Michael Kaler.
Okay, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Wisconsin against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
And the state of Wisconsin against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as firefighter and member of the Port Edwards Fire Department of the Village of Port Edwards.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as a firefighter and member of the Port Edwards Fire Department of the Village of Port Edwards.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the state of Wisconsin.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the state of Wisconsin.
Village of Port Edwards of Wood County to the best of my skills and abilities, so help me God.
Village of Port Edwards of Wood County to the best of my skills and abilities, so help me God.
Look away, chief.
So that sounds like a challenge to me, but.
He might know how to treat other people when they're injured, but I heard he could really be wicked with him too.
Oh, I know that, I've watched him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly awesome. Already bossed, all right. You guys are fiery today too, everybody spicy.
Remember, if you're alcohol.
Thank you, President.
Those is gonna come out.
Oh, got you.
Calling a paramedic.
Let me know when you find one.
I'm off to it.
Is that on yet? Well, you are now, you got sworn in, so now you're officially, you're officially on, buddy.
Thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I will do that, all right, thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Being, um, yes, you guys can leave. Moving on to under president's report, the motion to approve the administrator position pilot program as amended by the committee of the whole. Obviously, we were all just together the other day about it. So if somebody would.
I don't make a motion.
Okay, move, move, Redkey, you guys are very excited, move by Redkey, second by Zerflue. Okay, discussion. Sorry, I'm trying to move. Right, um, Dwayne, do you have anything to add right now? Cause I'm trying to flip through my pages.
Dwayne, can you hear us? Hello?
Dwayne, you muted. I've got immunity, I can hear you, I have more, nothing to add. I gotta ask, you have the one that I redrafted with this cross out, well, the police department.
Yes. Yes, yep.
Okay, that's the latest draft I put out after the committee as a whole. If anybody's seated, there's any question or changes, acknowledge your time to deal with it.
Okay, does anybody see anything? Have any questions, have any comments? Trustee Hess.
Thank you, madam president. What is going to be the criteria for success or failure of this program? When we do a quarterly review? How are we gonna determine success or failure?
Dwayne, do you have any idea for that, cause I don't.
I couldn't quite hear trustee Hess, but I think he's asking on the criteria, we have a review process, three, three, uh, three quarters, and I think he's asking for the criteria.
Yes.
What are the criteria we're gonna use to determine whether it's a success or a failure?
Basically, we'd have to take a look at the actual mo- portions that he, that he, that person's going to be required and meet. And now those who are dealing with the different departments. How that works, been working with different departments, you need to review each department, how that, that interaction occurring. Second, you take a look where it has to do with the purchasing process, how he's monitoring the purchasing process between all divisions or departments. And I think there's a third one, looking at how, how they handle their capital improvements or requests. And that the third one is then take a look at the budgetary processes, how he monitors, monitors each department's budget with the department heads. And you as a board members need to have a review process, we could put something together. I haven't done it yet, but for the criteria you're looking for, we could work on that. Otherwise, I think you just look what you have right now in front of you, how you're operating, and that would be the criteria that you have in front of you, what you, we're looking at.
My only concern is if we don't have something defined and agreed upon, everybody could judge it on something different, that's my concern.
Sure. Um, did you hear that, Dwayne?
I already said, and then I think it's, I gave you what I have in the, in the pilot program. If you want to deviate from that, that's your, as a board whole decision.
Anything else, Rick?
No, one other, yes, one other, we are changing the structure of the reporting mechanism. And we're all in agreement with that. Cause right now, everybody reports to the administrator, we're changing the structure.
So.
I guess, but when you deal with public safety groups, police and fire, they do not report to the administrator for anything but their budgets. All operations are covered, there's.
Understand, but it's, it's, it's built into the ordinances that there is a reporting structure, and we will have to modify that if.
Can't say, but it's in state statute.
I, I understand what you're saying, I just, we, that's not the reporting structure we currently have, operations excluded.
Okay.
That we have, so it is changing the reporting structure. Am I correct in that?
From where we are, yes.
There's a little map.
Say there's the.
It is built into the ordinance, and we have to change something.
I don't know, we'd have to look in.
Yeah, no, this is a pilot program, so it's basically just a test program. They'll be working with the finance and human resource committee. So when we do these reviews, you know, some of the criteria that, I'm the chair of that committee, and stay within budget, make sure that our purchases are done. We do that now, I do that with actually, Dwayne, I call him from time to time, I check on the status of the budget between him and Diane. And I think when I was at this last meeting, I do look at all the expenditures and income that the village has that comes in. So some of the responsibility of that chair. Now, if I stayed chair in the next year, or whomever gets it, that would be some of their responsibility. And again, I support this, it's a pilot program, it's a test program. And I will be also monitoring it, and with help from Dwayne, like I said, I, I check in with him a couple times a month, being just on the FHR chair. So hopefully that answers some of your questions.
Yeah, it does, I, it does, thank you for your input. I'm just wondering, do we need to put some specifics in here of the criteria?
The criteria for the, the. What we can do is if we want to move forward with this, we can then have another thing go through FHR with the success plan, like with, with a success plan, or like this is, this is what we'd like to see, make sure that we're hitting, checking these boxes, right? And then I think what is also important.
Take the motion out of it, we are all on the same page.
Yeah, so I think if we can do that through FHR, and what I would like to see as well is goals, not just are we making, are we, are we doing the things, but like goals for this individual, like writing grants on a regular basis, like different kinds of goals that way, trustees are flu.
Thank you, madam president. Law hit the nail on the head, it's a pilot program, so you don't want to change it or on ordinances, because we don't know if this program is gonna be here a year from now, three months from now, six months from now.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I, I don't even know if it's in the.
I wasn't sure if it was either, so I think if everybody's comfortable with that, going to FHR, having a on top of this, what we would like to see. And then getting input from Dwayne and other people, what, what that looks like, or what we need to be looking for, or working towards, I think that would be a good thing to do on top of this. Trustee Grundin.
So since I did have correspondence to share, that I committed to getting a format to share with you guys, but I did not. But for the purpose of everybody wasn't at that meeting, I would like to read the correspondence from Joe Terry.
Is this additional?
No, this is the same thing, everybody didn't get to hear it.
Were all of us there?
Yes.
I think everybody was there, yeah, yep.
Eric was missing, but Eric's still missing. We did all hear it.
Yep. Um, I just didn't know if there was additional.
Oh, and I'm sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
No, no problem. Um. As you guys would assume from the conversations we've had, I'll be voting no. Pilot program, I, I look at it as something that when people are positioned to be able to do it, like not in a place of crisis almost as we've been presented. So pilot program, you would have time and money to keep a secure space while you kind of run this experiment. And from the conversations that we've been having about, you know, rethinking the way that we're doing things and nearly having discussions of approaching places of crisis, I don't think it's the time for that. I think we should have, Dwayne, Dwayne has been ideal in that he knows the operations of our village, but I think we should have taken action earlier on what exactly, how are we going to move forward, like out of that temp space? So I just don't think that we're in the time to, when we haven't, we haven't explored the conversation or really put the research into other options. With that, there's no, I would be very uncomfortable having the conversation without the, the stuff in place ahead of time before we vote on this. A recording structure, a monitoring process, the criteria for success, I think that before we could make a decision, we would need to have all of that on the front side to see, you know, what makes sense and how we could really measure the success. Well, there was something else pretty important that just slipped my mind. If anybody else has anything for a second, I'll let you know.
Trustee Moore.
Dwayne, can I ask a question of you?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Have you already been kind of working with Ben? Not that this has been in place, but kind of with the idea that this may be coming.
Yes, we have, in the last month, we've been working, he's taken over a few things that I was working on. For example, the IT, and also there is an area that we were dealing with, and I said, would you follow up on it? And he took it over and very successfully took care of it for that day, for my request.
So would it be fair to say that you've already been working on kind of a slow release of duties towards Ben to make sure that this is something that's gonna be fluid and works?
Yes, both of I've been, and I've been doing for the last month, yes.
Thank you.
Did you think of whatever year, okay.
This doesn't include the cost factor of anything, it doesn't include anybody's adjusted pay, it doesn't include what we might be potentially looking at, or contracted people, the more legal fees. It's kind of shooting in the dark here, where there's no numbers, there's no, I think, I think that there's more work to be done on that. Also, the other, and there's several different angles of cost factors, so we could end up with these multiple cost factors. We might not be getting ahead, and we might not have the leaderships as far as what we would have had if we had an administrator. So I think that would be pretty disappointing. The other thing, and probably the biggest thing, we keep talking about, we can't continue to do things the way that we're doing them. And where we can find money here and there, and tighten up here and there. And we have not been creating a vision, we have not been working a vision. And there's not enough time in the day to do all of this within the structure of this pilot program. Nor is anybody connected on a state level, you know, working with the league, working with all of these different people in find, finding the funding, finding grants, making the connections, working with other communities. All of these things is gonna take somebody on the higher level that can take more of the aerial view with the needs of the village in its entirety. So I, at this time, number one, it's not ready for us to take action, I think it would be a bad move to take action without all the information and then those other concerns.
Did I see you?
I would just call for a vote, a motion was made.
Okay. Okay, and then why don't we do a roll call vote, please? Oh, sorry.
Voting on it as it stands or with some specific criteria to be included?
I think the other specific criteria go to FHR. So we can, so this as it stands, but then with the, with the follow-up with FHR, cause then FHR can also do the, with the same token, the actual numbers wise wages.
Question, do we need to modify the motion to include the FHR criteria? No.
Because we haven't, that's how we discussed it in the committee as a whole.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking a semantic question, class question.
Yep. So that's just, yeah.
Do that, that those get included into this.
Yes, and that's just, that's just making sure it goes to FHR, yep. Yep. Okay, so I will have Kim call for the roll call. Trustee Redkey.
Hi.
Trustee Moore.
Hi.
Trustee Zerflue.
Hi.
Trustee Hess.
Hi.
Trustee Grundin.
Name.
President Mansel.
Hi.
So that one passes, and then trustee Redkey will have some work to do at FHR to get the other specifics done.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that one, sorry. Things, okay. We are on to C, committee appointment and nomination to fill the vacant trustee seat. As we all know, and I'm not sure how much the public knows, trustee Moore is, this is her last meeting with us, because she is moving outside of the village limits. So she cannot stay in her seat, which is annoying. Oh yeah, we're gonna annex that, put that on my list of things to do. So there will be a nomination to fill her vacant seat, and then obviously some committee structure changes with that. But before we get too far on that, I do have some flowers and a challenge point for trustee Moore. For putting up with us and taking the step forward and serving our village. Thank you, I was really joking about. As we all know, it takes a big step to run for office, and then saying yes to being appointed or nominated. Yeah, yes, so it was, um, so I just, I'm very thankful that you decided to, to take the leap and, and to be with us for the last year. Yes, yes. So, um, the nomination to fill trustee Moore's seat, I'm going to nominate Mr. Eric Hummel to fill that seat. I, the reason why I chose Mr. Hummel is because he's obviously here quite often, obviously on Zoom today, he is joining us. But for, for a couple of years now, he's been regularly coming to village board meetings, committee meetings, advocating for Nipple Lake. Getting started on Nipple Lake District, which working with him on that is, is pretty fun as well. So I think he not only brings the knowledge to, to what we're currently working on, what we have been working on, we don't necessarily have to catch him up as much as somebody who maybe hasn't been around. And then also, he knows Robert's rules, that's another big one, putting agendas together. And then he does bring that face from Nipple Lake over here as well, so starting to include them in the processes and in their, in the voices, I think is important. So my nomination would be to Eric Hummel, if he would accept the nomination, sir.
Eric, do you hear us?
Yep.
Yes, I am. Could you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, actually, I would be excited, ecstatically excited to accept the nomination. My, if those of you might be wondering about my health, I had my major surgery a week ago. I got home last night. I'm in a better recovery state than what was expected. We're only one week out. I can get down to the treasurer's office and do whatever's needed this week. And I, by next week, can go to selected meetings in person. And you would have my full attention and expertise, whatever that is. And I would very much look forward to, to, to joining the team.
I would make the motion that we approve President Mansell's nomination of Eric to the village board.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Zerflu, second by trustee Grundon. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one carries. Congratulations, Mr. Hummel. With that, I'm going to try to share my screen without screwing this up, but we all know how that works with me. Okay, maybe I'm not going to share because that's how this works. So committee appointments would be to appoint trustee Hess as the new chair for planning legislative and property. Trustee Hess, do you accept, do you accept the appointment?
Certainly, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
No, I was.
With that, I have.
We don't vote on that, that's all.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
I was just laughing in your car.
With that, Eric Hummel being also on planning and legislative and property, public safety, Mr. Hess would still be on. He would also be put onto Public Works and then Mr. Hummel taking over for Parks and Recreation. Does that all sound agreeable to everybody? Any questions, comments, concerns on anything? Mr. Hummel, do you have anything on that? Are you okay with those?
I am willing to serve wherever you place me.
Okay.
How come you didn't want to be on public safety? I feel wounded.
I would, I've enjoyed that immensely as well. However, apparently I believe the president has a belief that that's very well covered at the moment.
Just kind of plugged him in where, plugged him in where Jen was, made some of those. Okay. So that will be the, now that is voted on and we'll go forward with that. I will email that format out later today. Okay.
Congratulations, Eric.
Welcome.
And then for, without objection, we are going to move number seven G four up to now. Because that was per Dwayne's request, so that we can get Mr. Heacock on board and get him out of here. So we don't have to pay him to sit all the way to number seven. So under planning and ledge, yep. Dwayne, do you want to take that seven G four?
Yes, basically, we've been working on it for quite some time, I would say, within the last three months, trying to get the permit put together. When I left the Zoom meeting last week, there were agreeable on all the conditions that we had put together. It's Scott and I put together. And the, we were also talking to Mr. Moore. I think we do have a representative that was going to be here at the meeting too, that may want to speak.
Do you want to speak?
It's Stacy's out there and also Scott's there. But one of the things I think we ended up with was that there was a letter that Joe said he would sign. And I don't know if you guys got it. That's all I'm concerned about. That's all I got.
I got it.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion then on that to accept the DMI demolition permit contingent on the conditions obtained for board approval.
Second.
Motion by Redkey, second by Moore. Discussion. I, yes, I do have the signs letter. So that was brought in, so that is kind of what we were waiting for. This was the letter that was outlined for DMI, like the, the contingencies, yes. Yeah, but he just needed to sign it.
Who signed it?
Joe Moore. Do you want me to pass it around? Because I mean, since it's a.
Maybe other people that see it.
Yeah, I think it's the, I think we have the letter, just now it's officially signed. I'm sorry, Kim, I forgot what you put. All of a sudden, I was like, oh, shoot. I know. No, this one is down here though.
Yeah.
Yes, yep, it's just now officially signed.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else from anybody?
And I'm sure if Stacy's out there, you may introduce yourself to her. I don't know if she's going to be in person or not.
She's here.
She's here.
You may want to say a few words because she's traveled all the way in for you.
Oh, okay. Where'd you travel from?
Oklahoma, Ohio.
Oh my gosh. Okay. Yes. And you should probably.
Around this town. It was beautiful. This is a beautiful little town here. And I am so excited to be part of the DMI acquisitions and moving forward with this new venture that they are, that you are on us to get started on. I think they really have some exciting plans in the future. And once we get the stimulation of this sad part down, I think you'll just be our, our trigger to go. So we're excited.
Thank you. Thank you for driving all the way here. My goodness. Sure.
I've spoken with them quite a few times on during Zoom meetings since December. So we've been definitely working hard to get this, get this going and, and I think we're pretty confident that it's going to be moving along.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We'd like to hear that.
I furthermore would like to thank Scott and Stacy and Joe Moore for working on this for the last three, four months. It's, it's been hammering out and I think we've got a good conditions and I'm very, very looking forward to seeing demolition and actually certain things to occur in the, in my, the, the old, the old Dom Tar site. Thank you.
As a president, I'd like to know if Scott has anything to add.
I was working on that. Mr. Heacock, do you have anything? Joe, Joe really wants to know.
I don't have anything else, else to add, other than, yep, I think the set of conditions really puts the village in a good position to, you know, get this project moving forward, so we can finally see some action on the mill site after much too long of it not happening. So happy to be a part of it and glad that we are moving this forward.
Perfect. Thank you. So, Joe, is that good?
Yes, first, I have two things to say. First one is deeply sorry that I offended you. Stealing your thunder. And the second thing is, I was a new president of the village of Fort Dunlop back in July of 2017. We had our first meeting with, I think.
Dominion.
Yes, and, and Joe Moore. And a lot of things were said, a lot of things were done. And now we are seven years beyond the end of this. And I guess it's the old cop loving me. I'll believe it when I see it. I plan to support it. But I just, too many things happened that the village did not get what they were in it for. But I think this is a pretty good situation now, the work of Dwayne, Scott, and bringing this forward. And I hope it's simple. And when you see Mr. Moore next time, about four years ago, I bought him breakfast in Silver.
There is, yeah, Joe wants breakfast. Okay. Anything else? Do we have any objection to going off table to Mr. Fluger? Is there any objection?
No.
Okay.
Point of clarification, the only question I have with the project pilot going through, it says near these conditions will be monitored by adminis, interim administrator Gao. Is that going to continue or with the pilot project, you no longer have an interim administrator? I'm just worried about the oversight and how that should be written, because in here it says, Dwayne.
Yeah, until December, he's technically on, on board until December, but that's something we can also work through at FHR on those.
What you're voting on, this proposal as submitted right now, would that be a motion?
He's also managed counsel after.
Yep.
Yes, there'll be, we have already a discussion that the village attorney was also going to be part of the, the, the process into a two. And we don't, that was in a discussion we had in the last meeting with attorney. And that was going to be in the document for help, check signing off the original permit would be his name on it too.
Does that help?
Perfect.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? One last time. No, with that, I will call to vote for the motion by Redkey, second by Moore to accept the DMI demolition permit contingent upon the conditions outlined for the board approval, which we have seen as signed now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That one carries. Okay. We have scratched that one off the list. Yes, thank you, everybody who has worked on that. Thank you for traveling all the way up here for that. My goodness. Okay, so we're going to go, yeah, why don't we just keep going through? Why don't we just continue through planning legislative property? So Jen, if you want to do any committee chair comments, anything like that, you get to go first.
Um, all right, we met July 31st. And we have, well, we have three motions. Now we're down to two. You'll see the one is to approve the changes to chapter seven point oh six, the parking restrictions. And in your packets, Ben had submitted, highlighted portions. In a nutshell, when the road construction was done out on Wisconsin River Drive and down this way, obviously the road was DOT and they brought the road down. They minimized it. What do I want to say?
Narrowed.
There's the word, thank you. They narrowed the road and DOT had sent a letter and basically people can no longer be parking on the sides there. And so we had to update our ordinance to reflect that. So Wood County and both the DOT actually had gotten ahold of us via some correspondence and said that we needed to, to update our ordinance. So if you don't have any questions on that one.
No.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to chapter seven point zero six parking regulations as listed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by, second by Redkey. Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one carries.
All right, the next one is, once again, the MOU for the therapy dog with the village attorney's modifications. So if you remember, previously it had come through, there was the MOU with the school district, but there was not an MOU yet between the village and the police department for the therapy dog. So Officer Abbott went back and worked through that MOU. Attorney Apps has looked at it, did offer some changes. And those changes, Dwayne, are in here, correct? Yes.
Yep.
Yes, all the changes in there, Brian, the attorney, and I've got them in that final document.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU for the therapy dog with the village's attorneys modifications.
Okay, motion by Redkey, second by Hess. Discussion. Yes, sir. Trustees are.
Motion said something about animal. I would like to know what kind of animal he's going to use.
Let's see, therapy dog or animal? I don't recall.
It's a dog.
It is dog.
Nice little cute puppy. His name is Bosco.
Thanks. That, that's what I meant there, trustees are flu. Okay. I guess it could be a rabbit or whatever.
Anything else? Any other comments, questions, concerns, besides from trustees or flu? Okay, hearing nothing out for discussion. From the motion by, no, no, I'm all sorts of, okay, motion by Redkey, second by Hess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That one carries. Oui. Anything else?
Other than that, we had more discussion on the Wisconsin economic development grant. So that was the one that's tied into the DMI property and its office building there. If you remember the office building, that's on lots owned by Wood County and owned by DMI. So it's a little bit wonky, but the county is interested in moving the application forward. I believe they went through an initial vetting process and everybody was on board and wanted to move that forward. And, and DMI is also interested in moving it forward after initial conversations. DMI is interested in putting some money towards the project, but we don't know how much yet. So that's not defined yet.
Dwayne, do you have an answer for us?
Yes, I do have an answer. Last meeting with them, we did bring it up. And then he reck, he would, they would participate in five thousand. In other words, in our, our share of the ten will now be, and they would participate in five. And then bring our cost down to just five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
There has been some discussion with interested developers, should the demolition occur? So we know, like with everything that's going on down there, if the demo occurs, there probably will be some growth in the village. It's just getting that demolition to happen. On the grant is the first step in that process. Wood County, I can't remember who, but someone in an initial meeting suggested it, would come and jump in board and, and like the idea of doing an ad hoc committee. So they could recommend to come up with a plan to develop that property then. Apparently Joe Zerflu did that. Thank you, trustee Hess. Along with that, trustee Hess noted that the YMCA should ideally be kept abreast of what's going on with that grant as obviously there's pieces going on in their building as well. So the possibility of kind of tying that all together. So more to come on that later.
Trustee Hess, did you?
I want an interjection if I may.
Yes.
The twenty-third, the Y, whatever it was, Y facility committee is going to be meeting and presenting all that information. Thank you, Dwayne, for that information. The grant, the reuse, a document, and then the permit application and sharing with them so they're aware of it.
Thank you.
The only other thing that we talked about, kind of of note, I guess, is that village comprehensive plan. We got a quote from North Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, and the cost was seventy-five hundred. And so we're going to Wood County and asking for what the cost would be there to see if they would be any cheaper before any decisions would be made. That's all I have.
Okay, and next meeting for that, did we decide, we did not decide on that one?
We didn't know who was going to be on this, but if those of you who aren't, you want to have that.
Trustee.
On the twenty-eighth at five o'clock, their public safety is at four o'clock.
I moved it up in my hat.
So five o'clock? Does that work for you, Mr. Hummel, on the twenty-eighth at five o'clock?
Sorry, I had to unmute. I will make that happen.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then we will pencil that in or forget. Okay. Moving from planning, sorry, my kids apparently need me. Trustee Zerflu, Airport Commission.
Okay, it's all pretty good, Eric. I'm sitting myself. The only thing for us to do is under, who's going to tie up total point number four. Under A is Adam, discussing, considering project, wants a quote for a, two vehemence for the terminal building. They're both antiquated and are not functioning as they should. The committee tabled that because the airport manager only got one quote and we would like to have another. We are in the process of getting that. It's not official yet, but if it does come in before our next meeting, it will be noticeably worse. Under item B, even though it's listed as A is an Adam, discussing, consider action regarding American fence court. It was still going on with the security fence over there. It's starting to get a little old. And item six, quotes for dates, quotes for furnaces, hanger taxes and sound system. We'll get all into that. That hanger tax thing is going to be an interesting thing. Our cars are, our, the plates in our publicly owned yard. Any questions?
Any questions for trustees or flu about the airport? No? Okay.
And in the minutes he's got our next meeting is August. And in the minutes he's got our next meeting is August first at eight o'clock AM. I'm sure it's uh, going to be.
I said, um, I missed that.
That's funny.
Never know. Looks like Father Menzel comes to us.
On five September, it'll weigh a hundred dollars.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Stewart, Police and Fire Commission.
Madam President, we, Police and Fire Commission last met on July fifteenth. Uh, in addition to the last phases of the fire applicants that you saw this morning, tonight, we continue to make preparations to fill the police chief position in early two thousand twenty-five. Our, our, uh, we also recently received another fire department applicant. And at our next meeting, we'll start that beginning process of vetting that resume and application. We look forward to input from the board for police chief salary window and start date. Our next meeting's Tuesday, we come today eight twenty at five PM.
Eight twenty at five PM?
I think that's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions, trustee?
One, three, one, how many, what are our numbers now for the fire department?
We're up to fifteen.
Thank you.
Trustees are flu.
Uh, just want to read something here about there was no public comment. President Stewart noted two to three teams had expressed an interest in the fire service and acquired about the possibility of cadet explorer youth program. Attaboy, make that work. And I know Chief is really pushing for that all.
Yeah, that's on our agenda for a week from today, and we're going to encourage that program to move forward.
Excellent.
For sure.
Perfect. Anything else for Chairman Stewart? Oh, okay, okay. And noted about your requests for a window of, in timeline. Got it. Okay, where am I? Plan Commission, none. Public Works Committee, um, seeing how trustee Sailor is not here. Does somebody else want to take that?
I'll take it.
Thank you.
Built it for him on the, we met on July twenty-fourth. Um, Public Works update. As you can see, that summer projects have been taking place. Crack filling has been done. Black topping has been completed. You can see Wisconsin River Drive is done. The alleyways have also been done. Uh, all the summer projects are uh, on track and within budget. Um, we do have a negative with the tree and brush, and that's due to the ash burn disease, and that will be later in Finance Committee that we're asking to move some money around. Um, other than that, um, we talked about some budget items that are coming up because budget is coming up about some of the shortfalls and uh, some of the accounts, the four hundred accounts. Uh, update on the TIF, the TIF project on Second Street uh, is started and going well. Um, hopefully that will be under budget, but we have, that's a five-year project going all the way down Second in front of the high school. Um, other than that, I don't have anything. Any questions?
Questions for trustee Reiki on Public Works.
Just have a list of the summer projects that are actively created.
Uh, we were in our.
They were in the packet, yeah.
But I don't have one here.
We can get you one.
Member, sure, Sailor might have that. And as far as the next meeting, I'll just let him determine that. He's the chair.
Thank you. We are down to Parks and Recreation Committee, trustee Grundon.
We met July thirty-first. Had discussion about Ripple Creek Park and Alexander Park. Um, Ripple Creek Park was pretty wet for quite a while, so it's now dried out, able to have the music in the park Wednesday, August twenty-first down there. Um, also regarding the playground equipment in Ripple Creek Park, it is becoming dated and aging. So, uh, the suggestion is around that Ben's going to bring forward potentially some options and plans to explore funding or replacing that equipment. If we have, if we can get some options. Um, otherwise, no maintenance issues to report at Lion, at Alexander Park, the Lions Club and Fun Fest Committee did put up a flagpole in Alexander Park at no cost to the village. The bike trail update, the road construction is completed. We're waiting on the overhead being beaten that's on back order. That'll be at Fort Road and fifty-four. Uh, they're expecting that to be three to four months out. The project won't be paid for and completely paid for until the project is done. The bike trail won't officially be open until the additional trail is added on Port Road between fifty-four and Burbunker. The anticipated completion is going to be May of June. And from retreat is going to be October twenty-seventh. More information follow.
Any questions for trustee Runin on parks? Hearing none. When was the next meeting?
Uh, not.
We didn't set one.
Locked that in.
Okay. To reach.
You want to lock it now?
Well, I don't know, because I don't know if we'll necessarily need one.
Okay, we'll just let us know. Just let us know.
When you attend your first parks meeting, I can guarantee you it'll be a swimming time.
All right, on meeting, yes, sir.
Oops, I have you on mute now.
All right, uh, moving to Public Safety Committee and Chairman Zerflu.
Can Eric, can Eric, can Eric note the reading on report? Biggest discussion we had is about the uh, the development program. Hopefully going to go through, and he's got some people interested. I would like to use my allotted however much time to be filled in as the chair of public safety on the meeting you all had today about India. So Rick, if you, could I?
Yep.
Yes, do you have the notes though?
Not in front of me, but I do. Those are at home on my computer at home.
We discussed the job application for the job description. We removed the SRO from the first letter, then what we added that they would effectively execute an SRO program in some of the activities. So we're still going to have an SRO, but they're not going to be the SRO officer. We talked about that, the modifications. There were several, two or three. Discussed, and so we finalized that. We can give you the updated.
Excuse me, you'll have your notes as part, submit them for our next meeting.
Correct, yep. I should be able to get that probably by tomorrow even. Yep.
Uh, we talked about, um, briefly talked about a salary range. We had that discussion. Um, it's to be determined in the next public safety. Well, we'll bring that to it. The discussion was, I think, seventy-eight to eighty-eight.
I believe so. And there was a, there was a formula with that.
Yes, it was basically what um, Chief Drew is being paid now, plus or minus five percent. Um, and the third point we talked about was a start date. When do we want to effectively recommend a start date? Some overlap to get month-end activities would be nice, so we're going to recommend. And just hopefully get like a January first start date. Um, but that is to be determined.
With hopefully no later than January fifteenth. That gives that person a good month with Scott or Officer Chief Drew. Um, so he can see all the different things, um, because there's a lot to that.
And, and go through public safety and the end of month activities.
And preparing for public safety meetings and board meetings.
Those will come to public safety as a recommendation. We can discuss those.
Yep. Like I said, I should have that out no later than by the end of the week to everybody on public safety.
Just, just maybe a, an average timeline that PFC needs?
Yes.
Yeah, we did talk about that. Thank you very much.
Yep.
We asked the discussion. We, rough, discussion was, how much does the PFC, how much time does the PFC need to get it, effectively get somebody onboarded? Or go through the process of advertising, getting heroes based betting, and then interviewing, and then be able to hire somebody before the end of the year and the start date. And that really determines about three months.
Uh, Chief Drew, Chief Stewart, you guys okay with all that we've talked about?
Sure.
Absolutely. And that'll be good enough staff for PFC to move forward?
If it gives us direction, that's what we want, yes.
And the first of the twenty twenty-five, if you have like six weeks to work for new guys, good enough?
I think that would be sufficient.
Thank you.
Recommendation of the start date came from Chief.
Thank you very much.
Like I said, like I said, I will, once my computer charge is at home, I was going to hopefully do that this afternoon. Um, I will type all of them up, and then I will send that uh, to the Public Safety Committee, but I might send it out to everybody if you're okay with that, just so that everybody gets the information and can look at it.
It'll be official.
Correct.
Very good.
Okay. Anything else on the public safety? Any other questions, comments, concerns, yada, yada?
Oh.
Okay. Next meeting, we have that one, twenty-eighth at four.
Yeah, the minutes here said four thirty, but that was officially changed to four o'clock.
Noted.
Make room for the new chairman of the final legislative.
Okay.
I'm sure he won't be as quick as he is. The outline here.
Hey, don't ruin those flowers. All right, FHR.
Yeah, uh, we met um, August fifth at five PM. Um, we had a couple citizens speak, Jim Vina, about the community resource officer, the automatic guard, put in some representative, the Police and Fire Commission. We had questions about the SRO and and things that were in the project program. Um, we discussed the bills, we discussed the police salary, but I don't know if that's an FHR, if that's a public safety now, or what committee we'll send it to next. Um, maybe we should take it as a committee of the whole. I'm not sure, Madam President. Uh, we discussed the wage for um, police chief, but I don't know what committee that will be going to next, if that will be going to committee of the hall or FHR, or where we want to do that. Seems like we have some in public safety now and some over in other meetings. Um, other than that, we will, oh, I do have a motion. Uh, we did talk about Diane's not here. She's with the election. But Diane, Dwayne, and Ben um, came up with a resolution to amend the two thousand twenty-four adopted budget. And what this does is it puts money in for a new squad car, because we don't have money in that four hundred account. And it also puts money to remove stumps that have been here from the ash burn disease. Dwayne, do you have anything else on that? For the resolution?
Uh, no, I don't. And it's, it also reduces the revenues because we don't expect to see them in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. So I'll make that motion to approve the proposed resolution, number two thousand twenty-four dash zero five, amending the two thousand twenty-four adopted budgets.
Okay, move by Reiki, second by more discussion. On that question, no. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one carries. Okay.
September fifth at five o'clock. I don't know if I said that.
You did know? I was going to ask, September fifth at five?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, unfinished business. Oh, sorry, are you done?
Five o'clock.
Mr. Reiki, are you done with?
Yes, I am.
Sorry.
If anybody has any questions.
Unfinished business from previous meetings. No, new business. Not a report from village administrator. Mr. Gao.
None at this time. You took care of a lot of stuff tonight.
Okay, the, for the report piece, do you want to talk about that motion?
Refresh my memory, please.
Um, motion to approve.
Oh, yes, that's this, that's that survey I brought up. That's correct. I apologize. I put a report together on that. It's a ex-territorial survey, ex-territorial zoning area, and it's a normal thing we've done in the past. So that's why I wrote it up. It's something we need, we've done in the past for ex-territorial zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't want to ever turn down one of your neighbors because they might bring it up to you.
When you need it. Okay, we have a motion by Zerflu, second by Radkey. Okay, uh, any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, report from clerk treasurer. Do you have anything for?
I have nothing.
Okay. Okay, trustee comments, anything? We'll see more.
Um, I guess I'm taking heat to everybody on the board for um, working with me over the past year and some odd months. Um, I think things get pretty heated and we all have strong opinions here, and that's a good thing, right? That's a part of government, and it should be like that. Um, so I just, I appreciate, I value everybody's input and that we, you know, what we've accomplished over this time period and for what it's worth, I think, um, not aboard is a difficult thing, and it's, it's an amazing thing to give back to yourselves. So thank you for what you all do and for continuing to do that. Um, Rick, you're phenomenal as a chair of planning, so congratulations on that. Eric, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
And thank you for the help over the last, oh gosh, year-ish. Um, and then finally, I just want to say thank you so much to um, Ben, Diane, and Kim, um, who have been an absolute wealth of information. They really know their stuff. And um, I'm sure, especially when I started, some of my questions seemed elementary. And um, I, I appreciate that all of you took the time and explained things and and um, were thorough in your explanation and you've always been so helpful. So thank you.
Right. Anybody else? You have anything? Just as a reminder from me, sorry, I was supposed to do this under president's report. If you cannot make a meeting, please make sure that you are contacting either the chair or myself so that we can, one, make sure that there's a quorum. I understand bigger meetings, committee of the whole, and these types of meetings, generally, we have enough people when it comes to committee meetings. You know, we're only running with a couple people, and I just don't want it to be where people are showing up to meetings and then, no, we can't have a meeting because we don't have a quorum. So just make sure that you are letting everybody know, um, again, either the chair or myself, and we can just make sure that that meeting will run smoothly then. Anything else from anybody?
Um, yeah, from this coming Saturday till the twenty-fourth, I will not be taking my village iPad with me up north. So if you would need me to send the email for anything, use my Connie address, joseph dot Zerflu at woodconnie, W, W I, dot W I, dot com. Oh, God, I got mixed here.
Perfect. Noted. Okay.
Except after five PM, I'll back off. I can enjoy myself.
Sure. Got it. All right. Hearing nothing else, committee calendar. PFC, we have eight twenty at five PM, public safety eight twenty-eight at four PM, followed by pit PLP at five o'clock, FHR September fifth at five o'clock, and then Public Works and Parks and Rec will be to be determined. Okay, without objection, I will call the meeting adjourned at eight.